Take something from you guys that you're enjoying right now and tell you, uh-uh. You can't have it. I don't want a substitute. I don't want somebody else to step in. I want Becky Bussier reinstated. There's no reason why she shouldn't be because nobody's telling us anything.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
No, I'm not done with my five.
Well, you've got three minutes and...
Yep, and I'm gonna finish.
And you can take another minute or so and then we're gonna wrap it up.
I am questioning why you would do such a thing. Why you would take this away from her. And my biggest question is, she's the low man on the totem pole, but she had gotten approval. Why didn't the superintendent or school committee ever say something with what she was doing as it was going along?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda, student reports. PBIS update. Wire Village?
Hello. So, the first thing I wanna do before I go into some of the data that we're looking at is bring up the winners of our poster presentation from the school. So, we wanted to start working on our bus dismissal procedure. So, we kinda put together as a team some solid rules that we wanted kids to follow while doing bus dismissal. And we opened it up to the student body to create us a poster. So, the poster winners received a gift card to Dairy Queen and had their posters hung up so that everyone could see them. So, real quick, they're here to just show you guys their posters. We have our kindergarten winner, Olivia Govan. Yeah, you can clap. Go ahead. They were awesome. This is Olivia's poster. She's, like I said, her kindergarten, our kindergarten winner. Go ahead, you can hold it up. She did an awesome job. Our theme, of course, is penguins. So, there's penguins on most of them. Our first grade winner is Aleah Anderson. Come on down, sweetie.
Michelle, why don't you have them stand across the front?
Yeah, sure. You guys wanna stand across the front and show everybody in the back what you got? They wanna see it. Our second grade winner is Lauren Tutlis. Our third grade winner is Adriana Russell, who couldn't make it tonight. And then our fourth grade winner is Russell Warfield. Come on down, Russell. Who is also a peer leader. Nice job, guys. You wanna show everybody out here, too? Nice job. And they worked so, so hard on this, and I'm so proud of them. So, you guys can go have a seat. Nice job. So, with the poster presentation, it was for our bus dismissal. So, what we did is, we did an assembly, had all the kids come, the peer leaders came, and they kind of acted out the right way to do bus dismissal and the wrong way. And then what we're doing is, as the teachers are coming down, they have these yellow hearts, which you saw out front. We're making a little graph of yellow hearts. Whenever a teacher on bus duty sees a child doing the right thing in line, they give them a heart. And then we're having a little competition with the bus lines. And the bus line that gets the most hearts at the end of the week is the bus of the week. And they get a coupon for the new school store that we have officially opened up Monday, which I'm really excited about. So, they're very, very excited. They come in Monday, and it was like a stamp. You're like, "Let's go!" I'm like, "Okay, walk." So, the other thing, which I gave you guys in your packets, is some of the data that we're looking at. So, with the PBIS, one of the things that we started doing is using the Swiss data system. So, we always had the data. We just weren't using the data effectively to really inform our decision-making as far as programming in the building, which is something that we can do now, which I think is great. So, the first level that we're looking at now is office referral data. So, we take all the office referral data and we put it into the computer system. And what we're able to do now is break it down by student, or by location, or by day, or by time, and that helps us to kind of figure out, okay, where are our problems and how are we gonna solve them? So, one of the biggest accomplishments we've been able to do just with this alone is use it to decide our A referral process. And then we're able to target the kids that may need a little bit more structure so that we get to them before they become a huge problem. So, with this, so far this year, we've been able to cut down our office referrals by more than 50% since the beginning of the year when we started this programming. And what you'll see in the very first graph is not only have we cut it by 50%, but in January and February, we were below the national average for office referrals per month, per day. So, that's, we're pretty excited about that data. The other thing we were able to do is look at it to decide. When you have something like this, we were able to break it down into students, right? So, if we have a student that's getting a lot of office referrals, they kind of got referrals to be in our check-in, checkout program, which is the second level of Swiss. So, now we're able to identify the students that need the most support and do the check-in, checkout. So, with Swiss, we have been able to get 80% of our second-level discipline referrals meeting their point goals every day. And most of their point goals are set at 80% of the day or more. So, you're looking at kids that probably would've been suspended or removed from the classroom for substantial amounts of time, who aren't right now because we have this really great program. The other thing we're able to do is use the data to kind of, like I said, inform our data-making decisions. So, when we looked at our location data, one of the biggest things was bus dismissal. So, that was where we started with our PBIS presentations and stuff. How can we get those numbers down and get that going? The other area was classroom. So, what we've done is, we're gonna tailor some professional development opportunities for teachers to start looking at our classroom management systems. How can we improve on them? How can we make them universal? And how can we make sure that there's a stream of classroom management style that's not only in the school, but then kinda tampers into the home and kinda goes like that? So, that's pretty awesome. The other thing I wanna say is, we did have donation letters that went out that you guys approved, which I was so excited about, and we received our first two donations, which is great. So, I just wanted to say thank you real quick to Sum Enchanted Evening. They donated over $200 worth of silly bands to our school store, which the kids are just loving. And Donna Flannery from Eric He Realty Services, who gave us a cash donation that's gonna help us get some cardstock paper for our next program. So, that might be all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from any members? None? Well, you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much. We're excited, so.
Thank you very much. Next item is Alicia Figoski. Alicia?
Chairman, I don't believe she's here today.
Did I come?
I do have an announcement, if I could make that.
Okay, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. Chelsea Trombley. I go to David Proudy. I'm the student rep. I'm proud to say that the Student Advisory Committee has created an email that will serve to receive student input from David Proudy. That email is proudystudentinput@gmail.com. I wanted to create this for a couple of big reasons. One is because I want to incorporate student input regularly into my reports, because I really think it's a valuable part of our school system. And two, I believe if I do this, I can make sure that student input never truly fades into the background. That it's always a vital part of this district, and I think that's very important.
All right. Do you have anything else there? No?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Next, Wire Village Peer Leaders Report. Linda and Nick.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nick Hoffman. I'm the school counselor here at Wire Village, also the director of our peer leader program. And I brought with us tonight a couple of peer leaders to tell you about what we've been doing in our schools here and a couple of activities we have coming up here. So, without further ado, I'll let them do the talking. Guys, come on up.
All right, you should be good to go. I'll be right here for you. And we'll bring it down a little bit.
Hello, my name is Russell Warfield, and I'm a fourth-grade peer leader representing Mrs. Kate's classroom. Tonight, I am going to be talking about our team-building activities. Each month, peer leaders participate in team-building activities designed to develop our communication, leadership, and decision-making skills. One of these activities, called dropping the bucket, had us trying to connect these plastic pipe pieces, I don't know where they are, together in order to accomplish the goal of getting a marble from one end of a bucket. It was hard to do, but working together, we accomplished our goal after three tries. That taught us a lot about communication and leadership. In order to prepare for speaking in front of the school committee, we played a game called one-minute speeches. Mr. Hoffman called us up to the stage and had us talk for one minute about a topic he gave us. It was fun because we didn't know what we were going to talk about and also taught us about being a good presenter.
Hello, my name is Brandon Grenier, and I am a fourth-grade peer leader representing Ms. Reeves' classroom. Tonight, I am going to be talking about our toy drive and animal foundation. Starting last year, the peer leaders began a toy drive to benefit local Spencer families. During the week of December 7th through 11th, we held another successful toy drive. All classrooms participated, and a lot of our staff got involved as well. In total, we raised and donated over 160 items to be distributed to families in the Spencer area. All donations go to the local Toys for Kids program run by Donna Flannery. We learned about helping others during their greatest time of need and how rewarding it can be. Later this year, we are going to be having a fundraiser opportunity to benefit the Second Chance Animal Shelter.
Hello, my name is Sydney Seymour, and I am a fourth-grade peer leader representing Ms. McVie's classroom. Tonight, I'm gonna be talking about the Cantab Drive and Spencer Pride Day. Throughout the school year, all of our students are encouraged to collect aluminum cantabs to donate to the Shiners Children's Hospital in Springfield. In December, the Shiners came to our school to tell us about who they are and why we collect cantabs and who the cantabs benefit. We found out that the cantabs' benefit will go towards helping pay for medical costs for children and their families, as well as help pay for travel expenses. In addition to the cantab drive, we are also volunteering the Spencer Pride Day in April. Spencer Pride Day is dedicated to the spirit of volunteering to help make your community better. Last year, the peer leaders helped clean up trash around the town. We are looking forward to helping again this year and in volunteering, everyone to volunteer their time to make Spencer better.
Hello, my name is Rihanna Ortiz, and I'm a fourth-grade peer leader representing Mrs. Speck's classroom. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about our peer leader food drive. During the week of November 9th through 13th, the peer leaders held a food drive to help the local Spencer family food pantry. We held a one-week contest to see which classroom could donate the most items. Mrs. Kate's room won with 196 items donated, but the real winner was the Spencer Food Pantry and local Spencer families. As a school, we donated over 1,200 food items that directly benefit the pantry and families during the holiday seasons. Helping families in our community made us realize that helping people is not only easy but very rewarding.
You all did a fantastic job. You've made your parents and teachers and us here at the table very proud of what you've done. What's that, Nick?
I know it's not on the agenda, but we also have some speakers from Knox Trail here.
Hi, I'm Recol Ortiz. March is definitely going to be an eventful month at Knox Trail. Baseball and softball season begins on March 21st. Peer leaders are sponsoring March Madness Spirit Days every Friday to help raise school spirit. Last Friday, Knox Trail hosted a family fun night with a student-staff basketball game and pizza at social afterwards. On March 21st, at 6:30 PM, the drama program is holding its first-ever talent show with an admission prize of $5.
Hi, I'm Camille Carvalho. This Friday, March 11th, the National Junior Honor Society is hosting a St. Patrick's Day beach party-themed dance from 6:00 to 9:00 to welcome spring. The annual grade-eight class trip to New York City will take place on June 8th. All students have recently been introduced to MobiMax, a web-based curriculum provided by the school district. This program is to help improve spring MCAS and PARC test scores, which will take place on March 30th and 31st. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, secretary's report. In the members' package, you have approved regular school committee meeting minutes of 2:00 to 16:00. Any additions, deletions, otherwise a motion to approve. So moved. Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Angela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, approved and retained executive session, meeting minutes of 2:00 to 16:00. Additions or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, just at the D, on the top of it says the 22nd.
Okay.
It should say the second.
Yeah.
Other than that, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, approved budget workshop, meeting minutes of 2:23 to 16:00. Any additions or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Wendy, second?
Second.
Second by Heather, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And next, approved and retained executive session, meeting minutes of 2:23 to 16:00. Any additions or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second?
Second.
Second by Heather, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, in your packet, financial report, you got an expenditure report in your packet. Mr. Suda.
Mr. Chairman, in lieu of going over this report in too much depth, it's pretty standard. There aren't a whole lot of variances in this report. We didn't bring forth any transfers tonight. We've been working on the budget, but we will have transfers for the next meeting as we start to go through the, clean up the end of fiscal year '16. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any specific questions about this report.
Any questions for members on the expenditure report? None? Okay, we'll move on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under my report tonight, in terms of an update on the leadership team, the district improvement plan and the budget were the two major items that we've been working on. The leadership team has met and prioritized the budget requests over the past month, and the school committee has reviewed that preliminary budget. The budget requests are driven by the district and school improvement plans, which in turn are driven by data-informed needs. The requests include what is needed to serve the district's students, to support its staff, to bring the district out of Level 3 status, and to plan for the future needs of the community. On Monday, January 23rd, Mr. Suda and I presented to the boards of selectmen from both Spencer and East Brookfield an outline for a vision of the district, a strategic plan for improvements, and then the three-year district improvement plan itself. The district improvement plan was approved by the board on January 12th, and I will still be providing the monthly updates. So, in your packet tonight, you have the update that is in, and I'm trying to color-code these just for the ease of reading them as you get updates. But if you notice studying on, I believe it's page six is the first update that's included, and you'll notice that it's in blue. So, as I provide these each month, you'll just be getting an update on the changes that have been made within each action area. In terms of the technology committee update, the committee continues to develop a vision for the district. Last week, I met with student members who reviewed a student survey that will be distributed. Several other members of the committee attended a demonstration of smart technologies that was held in the high school library on March 1st. This presentation showed the power of the newest technology that enhances student learning through the interactivity of the board. Not this board, but the board, the technology board. The district continues to install Wi-Fi access in its facilities. East Brookfield's installation was being done during the February school vacation, and Wire Village is scheduled for April vacation week. Knox Trail's installation will be done during the summer, which will then mean that all our facilities are Wi-Fi accessible. And in addition to the Wi-Fi projects, I wanted to let you know that the following additions have been made or are in progress at this time. 60 Chromebooks and two charging carts have been purchased for the elementary schools with plans to go on to the high school next for Chromebooks. Four HP Sprouts that are maker space innovations, including 3D scanning stages and design software, are being purchased, one for each of the school facilities. And the one at Knox Trail will actually have a 3D printer that will come with it, as the high school already has a high-end 3D printer. We did not purchase one for the high school level as well. New smart boards and professional development will be offered to teachers on all levels so that classrooms can be equipped with the 21st century technology for teaching and learning. And Mr. Suda and I are in the process of looking at that technology now and the pricing on that. In late spring, we hope to hold some open houses so that the community can come in to see all the advances that we're making for student learning through such technology innovations. In terms of safety and security, I just wanna give you a very brief update. In January, I met with Chief Parsons and Lieutenant Befford. So, fire and police were involved in that meeting, and we reviewed the evacuation and relocation plans and also the plans to do some ALIS training. And at that time, Lieutenant Befford thought that there was a trained officer, and so that the police would take the lead on the ALIS training. He's just recently informed me that that is not true, that anyone on the force is ALIS-trained, so we'll be looking into how to get a staff member trained to coordinate the ALIS training. As an additional reminder, I wanna mention the importance of the date of May 9th, because that's the date that North Brookfield Public Schools will be hosting speaker Chris Heron of the Heron Project and Project Purple. As we're all aware, the opioid epidemic is critical, and many agencies are trying to address the addiction issues and save lives. Schools are taking a proactive approach by having anti-substance abuse programs, such as Chris Heron's, to provide speakers, initiatives, and events to empower youth to stand up to substance abuse, to promote positive decision-making, and to encourage all teens to make a difference in their community. The Heron Project is designed to educate youth and at-risk populations on the importance of a healthy lifestyle. He's an engaging speaker, and he's a compelling speaker who, through his own story of addiction, will inspire students about his conviction about healthy living and then the influence that each student can have on their world. There will be three school districts participating, North Brookfield, who's hosting it, Bay Path, and our school district. I'd like to thank North Brookfield Superintendent Marilyn Tenza for inviting our school community to be involved in this important event. So, please save that date of May 9th for this important event, and details will follow because we hope to also have a follow-up meeting the next night for parents so they can debrief the information they received that night. I wanted to let you know about senior activity dates. The dates for senior events have been proposed as follows. Some of these dates may be subject to change, but May 12th, we have the senior dinner dance at Lester Country Club. May 13th is the last day of class. May 17th, senior banquet. 18th is the senior cookout. 18th and 19th, the seniors will take their finals. On the 20th, there will be makeups for the finals that may have been missed. June 1st is the honor banquet. June 2nd is class day. June 3rd is graduation. And the senior class trip date is to be determined at a later time. Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, on Friday, March 4th, I intended the monthly meeting of the collaborative to review their annual budget requests for FY '17. It was the first of a number of meetings that will be dedicated to the budget talks, but as soon as I have the finalized proposal back from them, I'll be reporting back to the school committee. And last, but certainly not least, in memory of John Wage, we were all saddened to learn of his passing. John was a music teacher who lost his courageous battle with cancer on February 24th. He was a dedicated and highly respected member of the high school faculty. He was a devoted band director, and he was a true friend to all who knew him. His incredible impact on the community was obvious at the services. There was a huge outpouring of support that was visible Saturday, the 27th, during the calling hours in Brookfield. I wanna let the public know that memorial contributions may be made to the John Wage Memorial Scholarship Fund, which is care of David Proudy High School, Main Street Spencer. He will be greatly missed, and the students are expecting to pay tribute to his memory by creating a mural in the music wing of the high school. There's a rough sketch of the planned mural that's been drawn by student Aloria Capalletti. Is she here tonight? Okay, so, I just wanna thank Aloria for spearheading this. She has a number of teachers and students assisting her, and I think it will be a beautiful tribute and loving memory of Mr. Wage. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Any questions for the superintendent report? Heather?
I just had a question about the Heron Project. Is that a nighttime activity for the community, or is that a daytime activity?
Open to the public and is nighttime activity. I reported it at my last report, I did it in my last report, but I just wanna keep reminding people because it's a very important event.
Okay.
It is a nighttime event. It is open to the public. And we will have save-the-date cards that will be going out to our community soon.
Okay. And secondly, will you be meeting with the East Brookfield Fire and Police Department as well?
We will, as soon as we have an ALIS training plan.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Unfinished business, superintendent's evaluation. Those evaluators participating have submitted their evaluation report to me. I've completed my job as the aggregator of putting all the information together. I will report copies out tomorrow to all members. We'll have some discussion about it at Thursday meeting, and then we'll take a final vote next Tuesday's meeting. Next item, and unfinished business, is to revoke the motion to approve bidding for the David Proudy High School roof repair. Mr. Suda.
Mr. Chairman, we discussed the need to repair the roof, but we do need authorization to move forward with that and bid the project out so we can get some estimates and get that project moving. So, we need a motion from the committee to go ahead and instruct us to seek bids for that project.
To reaffirm the vote.
Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Vinnie to reaffirm the vote and to authorize the control to go out to bid for the roof. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, under new business, members in your packet, you have an enrollment report. Any questions in regards to that?
Comment?
Heather?
No, I appreciate having it broken down by grade level. It's very helpful. Secondly, could we get a report on the number of students who have school choice out of the district? Because it's on that one line there, I know that's incorrect. If, I don't know, by grade level, just so we could get an idea of...
I'll have that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? You have a personnel report in your file. Any questions in regards to that? Next item, field trips. David Proudy High School, Italy field trip.
I wanna go.
You're not gonna bring your helper?
Hi, I'm Melissa Jettie. I am the head chaperone for the Italy field trip, which is happening in a month over April vacation, I hope, if you say yes. Please say yes. I don't know, I've never presented to you guys before, so I don't know if I'm supposed to, like, go over stuff before, or if you just hit me with questions.
Just give us a quick overview.
Okay, so Saturday, the 16th, we leave at night. We will meet at Proudy and take a bus to Logan Airport to make sure we have everybody. And then we land in Zurich and transfer over to Milan by Sunday morning. And then we travel from Milan by bus to Verona, so we can see Juliet's balcony from Romeo and Juliet. And then we travel to Venice. We spend a little time in Verona for some sightseeing, and then we move on to Venice. And we spend all of Monday in Venice on walking tours, and then we go to a glass-blowing place. I'm not really sure what it's called. I don't know all the terms yet for it over there. And we spend the day in Venice there. We have some free time to walk around and explore the city. We will have tour guides with us, so we can't get lost. On Tuesday, we're going to travel to Florence, and we'll have two different types of walking tours around the city, and then a little bit of time to explore on our own. And on Wednesday, there's two options. Some students are going to Pisa. They had an additional option that they had to pay a little bit extra for on their own to go to Pisa and see the Leaning Tower of Pisa, and the rest of us will be going to Florence and exploring the rest of Florence. And then on Thursday, we'll be traveling to Rome to visit the Colosseum and the Roman Forum, Spanish Steps. And then on Friday, we go to Vatican and explore there for the entire day and see the Sistine Chapel. And on Saturday, we come home, the 23rd.
How many lucky students are going on this?
Ten. There are 15 people enrolled. Three of them are parents of the students that are going. Well, actually, I think one's an aunt. But, so there are 10 lucky students that get to go. Yes. There will be copies of passports on my person at all times, on the second chaperone's person, and there will be a third copy at the school. We will have copies of their passports, their health insurance cards, their emergency contacts, and any allergies or food requirements that they need. And no students will be allowed anywhere at any time without an adult or chaperone. And all adults that are going on the trip will have a Coryon file. We just didn't get through with it all yet, because I wanted to make sure we get approved before I jumped the gun with all this stuff.
Any questions from any members? Heather?
Just for the superintendent, is there approval from you?
It has my highest recommendation.
Anyone else have any questions? Not a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
We're on your way.
She's right there.
All right, next is the sixth-grade trip for East Brookfield to the Sergeant Center.
Okay, good evening. My name is Chrissy Lav, and I teach fifth and sixth grade at East Brookfield Elementary. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval to take 23 sixth graders, we'll have five chaperones, including our school nurse, to Sergeant Center. It is affiliation of Nature's Classroom, which I know some of you are already familiar with. I'll give you a little bit of background, is that okay, just so you know? Nature's Classroom at Sergeant Center provides an opportunity for our students to participate in a residential outdoor school program. The program is divided up into three areas: adventure, scientific field investigation, and outdoor skills. The adventure activities are designed to bring the students together through community and team-building activities. The scientific field investigations immerse students in the role of a scientist, and through their observations, data collected, they can draw conclusions about aquatic and forest ecosystems. The outdoor skills activities include map and compass, GPS navigation, wilderness survival, and early pioneer skills. Emphasis is placed on experiential education rather than lecture-based instruction. They immerse the learners into authentic, real-world, hands-on activities that stimulate the imagination, develop curiosity about life, and create an environment in which to share the discoveries. It also provides students with an understanding of their importance in the world's social and environmental future. Through outdoor adventures and hand-on field investigations, they discover that they can make a difference in our world. And just a little quick away from cell phones and the video games, they can explore their role in the environment while working with other students as well. I apologize if I got to say it would be May 18th to the 20th. It is a Wednesday through Friday.
Any questions? Wendy?
Where is it located?
Peterborough, New Hampshire.
Anyone else?
I motion to approve.
Motion by Angela to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both so voted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My favorite thing.
Next, fundraiser, Knox Trail. Here you go, Jody. You're busy.
So this is just, this actually takes us to April vacation, the events that are going on at Knox Trail. Peer leaders would like to hold a Yankee Candle fundraiser. Knox Trail has talent, is on March 24th, scheduled for March 24th. We certainly would like Mr. Suter to perform on that night, because he's a talented musician. St. Patrick's Day...
Sorry, it's not funny.
No, we really did ask. Any of you, if you'd like to join in, we could always use that ax.
I think I'll be preparing for my trip to Italy.
Yeah, exactly. This Friday, National Juniors Society, St. Patrick's Day, the girls had said that. Mr. LaRue runs a three-on-three basketball tournament with whoever signs up, anyone in the school for March Madness on March 18th. Dodgeball tournament would like to go on for a whole school sign-up. There is an admission fee for teams, but it's more to buy pizzas and things, but the extra proceeds go to peer leaders. And that's what I have on the agenda. Thank you.
Any questions for Jody? Otherwise, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Wendy, seconded by Angela. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. David Proudy High School sophomore class fundraiser. Who's in?
Hi, Mary McLaughlin, sophomore class advisor. We'd like to hold a fundraiser to sell fudge. It would be held the third and fourth week of April, hoping that the fudge would come in for Mother's Day. The fudge is $10. We get 50% profit. It's a fundraiser put out by Hebert Candy's.
Really good. 50% is good.
Questions or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Angela, second.
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both so. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Next, donations. Wy Village sweatpants donation from First Congregational Church. I think we'll just take a vote on these. David Proudy High School exam table from Louise Stockman from Kyle Stotz. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, second.
Second.
Seconded by Angela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both so voted. Committee comments. Anybody have any committee comments or future agenda topics?
I do.
Angela?
I just want to report, Dr. Crowe did mention it in her report, but I attended the last tech committee meeting as the school committee rep, and it was very productive. I'm excited. It's a great group of interested people. We discussed that it's going to be a long-term committee, because we really want to start putting our technology into like a three- or five-year plan. So there are surveys that are being prepared, one for the students that was prepared by students, and then one that's going to be for the teachers. The student survey is going to Knox and DPHS students, and then the teachers of District Ride will receive that survey. And then we'll continuously be working on the responsible use policy. And then also, our committee decided we all wanted to kind of see, because I've done tours of the schools, but not thinking about the technology necessarily on its own. So as we meet, we're going to meet at the different schools and do tours, really thinking intentionally about the technology and how it's placed and how much is placed and all that. And then it was very exciting to hear that we have Chromebooks now for East Brookfield, and that's very exciting, because that really, I think, is going to help those teachers out immensely, so very excited about that.
Well, thank you for serving on it, Angela. We appointed you when you weren't here. But we appreciate you doing that. Anyone else have any? Yes?
Chairman Hayes, now that I'm trying to use this email to get student input more regularly put in, I'd like to try to make my personal student rep reports a little more regular, just so when I go to report them, it's not at the beginning of every month, and it's not a huge, huge chunk of information. So I'd like to try to get those in the agenda as often as possible now.
Okay, fine.
Every week if I can.
All righty.
Thank you.
The only thing that the chair has, as we move forward towards the David Proudy Needs Improvement Building Committee, we're going to hear later after we take the break and go into the budget, a lot of items that we are going to need to be done for capital projects that bids have to go out on. So I have a list of people that have expressed interest in serving on the committee. I would like to submit that list as a slate tonight to be voted on by the committee. There still will be seats open that will need to be appointed, hopefully finished up by next Tuesday's meeting, because we have a couple other people that have contacted me that are supposedly in the process of sending applications in. But tonight, I'd like to get appointed Ralph Hicks, Jim Surby. Both of those gentlemen served on the former building committee, and Dr. Hicks was the former superintendent. Mary Millett, who's a resident of Spencer's and has expressed interest. Mary Brainey, the chairman of the Spencer Finance Committee. Dr. Crowe will serve as superintendent. Dr. Jordan will serve temporarily as the principal from the high school. Adam Cadet, the town manager from Spencer. Mr. Kenneth Nowzak expressed interest, and he has some 30 years as a retired teacher and is willing to serve. I think he'll be a valuable member. Donnie Berthrum, state rep, who has a good background in construction, has offered to serve. As state rep, Peter Durant, who has an expertise in IT and technology, is also willing to serve on that committee. The town building inspector, William Klansick, will be serving as well as an advisor to the committee. And our comptroller, Gary Suter, will be involved as well. So I'd like that to be brought to the chair as in the form of a motion to approve that slate, and then we'll fill the remaining seats hopefully by next Tuesday. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mike?
I did a little research, and I had a conversation with Diane Sullivan at the MSBA, and it seems like, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here. It's my understanding that both towns need to be on board with this, and after reaching out to people in East Brookfield, it doesn't sound like, the town fathers anyways, aren't interested at this time, and nobody from the towns have reached out to the town fathers, you know, to say that they are interested. Excuse me. But it's my understanding that this is, that we need to be accepted into the program before we make this, before we put this board together. And at the point when I had spoken with Ms. Sullivan, she had not yet seen a statement of interest, and she had pointed out to me that back in 2013, the previous, when we previously had a statement of interest in, we pulled out of it. From our conversation, she explained to me that we wouldn't necessarily be able to start where we left off, that we would be starting from scratch. So I guess, it seems like we're, it seems like we're jumping ahead here.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
I would just, I'd like to see some paperwork, Mr. Chairman. Again, the letter of interest and the response from MSBA before I can vote on this.
Well, we're going to take a vote on it tonight. We have sent this off to council for review. Council has responded back. It is the authority of the school committee to appoint a school building needs committee. Does not have to have approval from town fathers from either community. This is not about just building or doing a renovation to the high school. This is a needs committee. We have a roof that needs to be replaced. We have security doors that need to be replaced. We have no people on site to take on those tasks. These are tasks that this committee will take on in the initial stages as all the other stuff moves forward. I have not spoken directly to school building myself. Dr. Hicks has handled that, and I would suggest that he has a very good rapport with those people. I have reported to the committee what Dr. Hicks has reported to me, and it would be best for members to have that information flow through the chair and the superintendent's office than for individuals to be off on their own, trying to do their own investigation as to where we're going to sit with the report, where we're picked up, where we're dropped off. I think we have people that served on that committee that are now willing to come forward and to serve. They're professionals in the area, and we can't kick this can down the road any longer. And we're going to move forward regardless of what East Brookfield decides they want to do. The town of Spencer is going to move forward, and we're going to do what's in the best interest of the kids of this district from both communities. And that's going to happen one way or the other. So we're going to take a vote. We'll take it on a roll call vote. It will either pass or it won't. Anyone else have any comments?
Mr. Chairman. I sent an email to the chair, to the superintendent, asking for information before I made these phone calls, and I didn't get a response, so that was the point when I made these phone calls.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? On a roll call vote? Heather?
No.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote until we get some more information.
Angela?
Yes.
When?
Wendy?
Wendy?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much for the support. We'll move forward. I'll contact those people. We'll make the remaining appointments. The chair will leave seats available for the selection from East Brookfield should they choose to be partners in moving forward and doing what's best for the interest of the kids in the district. We'll leave a seat open for their finance committee members, and we'll leave a seat open for any resident from East Brookfield that would like to serve. If those seats don't get filled, I'll be more than happy to appoint representatives from this committee, because we need representatives from the school committee to serve. It's not going to just be Spencer representatives. So at that point, either Mr. Ethier or Ms. Messier will be appointed to fill one of those seats. At this point, a motion to adjourn. Vinnie?
If I might, I'd like to make a few comments.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to use the podium.
I guess.
You missed it. It was at the beginning of the meeting.
The Spencer East Brookfield Regional School Committee is a legislative body. We are elected at large, district-wide, and we're sworn in as district officials to represent the entire district, not members from East Brookfield and not members from Spencer. I think there's been confusion about that over the years, and if you take the time to read the district agreement, it's only about 25 pages. It clearly states, the writers of this agreement clearly wanted each member of this organization to understand that they're not only representing the community which they're from, but they're representing the district, to try to knock down those barriers between the two-member communities. I think we still have some work at that, but I think we've made progress. We're an autonomous committee. We're not beholden to the boards of selectmen in either community or any financial committee in either community. We're held accountable by the voters in both towns. We're tasked with being the fiduciaries for this district. Our major responsibilities include setting policy, approving a budget, hiring the superintendent, the business manager, and the treasurer for the district. Three years ago, this district was in financial disaster. In three short years, this district has gone from a $1.4 million deficit to a surplus. Today, the district is in very sound financial shape. Don't take my word for it. Ask Mr. Suter, he's our comptroller. Speak to Mr. Abrahams, he's the state overseer, or Mr. Schlossstein, our local treasurer for the district. Through the hard work and perseverance of this committee in unison with the administration, we have been able to turn the corner financially in this district, and we're well on our way to turning the corner educationally as well. What happened? How did we get so far off course? Well, the answer's pretty simple. The district was spending money that it simply didn't have. As in any household, any business, you have to live within your means. If you take in $500 a week and you spend $600 a week, you're not going to be able to do that for very long. It finally caught up with the district. Over the past three years, we've made a lot of changes in the district. Changes in the form of closing two Spencer schools, hiring a new superintendent, a new comptroller, a new treasurer. We hired new administrative staff, new teachers, new families moved into the district, and of course, new students came to our schools. Some of these changes came extremely fast, but we had little to no choice. The district could not continue on its current The district could not continue on its current course, or we would have gone bankrupt. It wasn't even a question of it. We would have gone bankrupt. I'm not sure if everyone really understands just how close to bankruptcy this district actually came. We couldn't pay the food bills to get food delivered to our cafeteria to feed the students. And it wasn't like we missed a single food bill. We were months and months behind. Change comes easier to some than others, and change certainly has been met with some resistance from the various stakeholders in both communities. That said, we needed to change in order to survive. What's baffling to me is when I was elected three years ago, people said, geez, the district's in a real mess up there. I hope you plan on making some changes. Geez, are you going to try to clean up that mess up there? Well, it wasn't a year or two later, they were saying, no, not that mess. We didn't want you to touch that. That was fine. It might have been broken, but it was fine. And don't fix that. That's okay. We've always done it that way. So it's got to be right. Well, you can't have it both ways. And when you start clearing out the years of skeletons from the closets, more skeletons kept popping out. It was a culture issue in the district and still remains. The public isn't even aware of some of the most disgusting things that have happened in this district. For months, and rightfully so, students and parents have been saying, where's Principal Bellistock? Where's Principal Bellistock? And it's gone on deaf ears. Nobody's answered it. I suggest that you ask the gang of three who assaulted her in the high school office. These actions were witnessed by employees of the district, and yet those employees refused to come forward and report it as their duty to do it. For the record, Principal Bellistock has been on unpaid leave since the day she left. The leader of this gang has also publicly assaulted well-intentioned parents who stepped forward to help fill positions that teachers refused to fill. This isn't a district issue. This is a culture issue at the high school, and this soon too will be resolved. Dr. Crowe, as one member of this school committee, you have my complete support, not that you need it, to conduct whatever due process is necessary, have any hearings, and to take the appropriate action against this gang of three. There's no room in this district for that behavior on any level. I encourage parents and students to see through these charades and realize that you are the ones that are being played, and the reasons are extremely obvious. It isn't about who you like and about who you dislike. It's got nothing to do with it. We're way past that. This is about doing the right thing. The moral compass of this district is gone, and we put that moral compass back in place to try to realign it, but it has to be a complete buy-in by all, and that's not happening. Good people make bad decisions, and they need to live with the consequences of those The school committee recently voted unanimously to reassemble the school building committee. Both communities collectively have spent over $600,000 in design and planning for this project before it was shelved three years ago. Why was it shelved? It was shelved because we were $1.4 million in the hole and didn't have any idea how we were going to get out of it. And maybe all of the work that's been done, and subsequently some and maybe all of the money that's been spent may be able to be reused. That was for design and planning purposes. Nobody at this board ever stated that the school building administration was holding funds for this project. We realize that that's not the case. No funds have been earmarked for the town of Spencer East Brookfield. That's not happening. We realize we have to go through the process. The funds that can be saved are those plans that were drawn up, the designs that were in place, and it may not be too late to utilize that, and it's certainly worth looking into it to see if we can salvage $680,000. The town fathers in East Brookfield decided not to be represented in this process. It's their choice. However, we established the school building committee, and we don't need them to be involved, but I'd like to see them involved. They're part of this district or a member community. The building committee is established by the regional school district, and one would think that both towns would take this as a challenge and an opportunity at the same time to do something very positive for this district. As this moves forward, it'll be six to eight years, if we're even lucky, before we see any results. What that means is that first graders may see a new high school. First graders. The Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District was formed in 1962. It's 54 years old, the district. It was amended, the agreement was amended in 1985, 31 years ago. And for all practical purposes, this district is not going to go away, and it is not going to be broken up. We all understand what the district agreement says. And again, I encourage anyone who doesn't understand, it's a 20-page document, was written 54 years ago, amended 31 years ago. It's real easy reading. There's no way that Desi is going to divide this district. They have to approve a split of this district. There's no way that the voters in East Brookfield and Spencer are going to come together at a town meeting and vote to do away with this district and split this district. We certainly can't tell the town fathers in East Brookfield what to do with their advisory committee. We can't tell them that they shouldn't do that. That's their prerogative if that's what they want to do. But what I can say is this, is in a year, 18 months, whenever the report comes back, what's going to change? What's going to change? I would submit that nothing will change, that at the end of that report, we're still going to be a district of Spencer and East Brookfield, and I think we should start working collectively towards making the place a better place for all. The committee collectively worked diligently to help resolve some of the issues that were confronting the district, all the while trying to move the district forward. Moving forward required change in everything that we do, and you've heard that statement from me time and time again. Right is right. That means right's got to be right today, it's got to be right tomorrow, and it's got to be right next year. The town fathers from both towns and the public at large have voiced concerns regarding the lack of the building maintenance and upkeep, along with structural repairs that needed and security upgrades. Our buildings truly need this, and rightfully so that they bring this up to us. They've asked us to plan for these issues. They've asked for us to budget for these issues. Over the past three years, when you're looking at $1.4 million in debt, you can't rightly plan for the maintenance issues that face this district. But the budget discussion that we're going to have shortly will show that the committee has taken steps in that direction, and it'll be up to the town fathers in both towns to step up and be real leaders and support the educational requests that are going to be coming forward. It's important to understand that the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District, just like all other regional school districts in the Commonwealth, have no significant means of raising income. We rely on the state, on the member communities, on state and federal grants for our funding. That's where our funding comes from. When we develop our annual budget, our jobs are to make certain that we provide, to the best of our ability, a budget that addresses the educational needs of all the students in the district, a budget that is both educationally and financially sound, sustainable, and a budget that voters in the member towns will support. That's our job. That's what our job is with the budget. I do want to publicly take the time to thank the entire administrative staff, along with every employee in the district, for doing the great work of educating our youth. This district is fortunate to have some real great teachers, and for that matter, to have some real great employees who truly just want to do their jobs, come to work every day and just do their jobs, and not be bothered by the day-to-day rhetoric that sometimes overshadows the district. I'm asking all the stakeholders in the district, the administration, the employees, the town fathers, parents, students, the citizenry at large in both communities, to support the educational budget this year. Let's work together to create a better learning environment for all of our students. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time.
Thank you for those comments. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll take a 10-minute recess and start our budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Mike?
I just have one more comment. Actually, it's a question. I had sent out an email asking basically where this $680,000 was spent, what was it spent on. I'm going to ask in open meeting. Can I get a response to that? Can I see, can I get a copy of these reports?
Yeah, I think all of the records from the former building committee are in the superintendent's office and stuff, and once the committee makes their first meeting, I'm sure Dr. Hicks and the rest of them will be more than happy to bring forward all that information to you and stuff, and we'll be happy to have you on that committee to serve, and we'll hope that you do.
Yeah, I mean, I've shown, I mean, people here have seen, I've supported every instructional, educational, and the budget and whatnot, but I just, I want to, I just need some questions answered on this school building.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chairman, I just had a question. Are these budget talks considered an executive session?
No, this will be open that we're going to go into.
Okay.
We'll take about a 10-minute recess. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Heather, second.
Second.
Second by Angela. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We'll open up the next meeting in about 10 minutes. I don't know if you did it. It was those little PBIs. I know. They were kind of cute. We'll call the meeting to an end. Dr. Crowe?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to apologize. I was remiss in introducing the newest member of our administration. I'd like to introduce Ms. Katie Duress, who's going to be the HR payroll specialist at Central. Very happy that she's joined the staff, and she's already making a great impact, so we're thrilled to have her on board.
And I think most community members have already met the treasurer, Bill Schlossstein. He's here tonight as well as we have the budget discussions. All right, I guess at this point, Dr. Crowe, we turn it over to you or to Mr. Suter?
Mr. Suter.
Hey. All right, so everybody's got a green book. We took the liberty of, we made a few changes here and there to the budget, so all the latest information is in the book. We put that real handy-dandy table of contents so we can all follow along. So basically, what I've put together here is the budget based on the asks of the administrative team. The superintendent, myself, have gone through this whole thing, and we prioritized everything and put in what we feel is necessary to move the district forward. So we'll get to that, and there's a schedule in here that kind of highlights, or takes you through the big changes in the budget, and we'll go through that. So the first page, the operating or assessment calculation, is based on the budget that's going to be, that we're going to go through, and it's also based on applying $813,000 of excess and deficiency funds to offset the payment of the debt, the deficit loan. So other than offsetting that deficit loan with that revenue, there are no other revenue sources applied to this budget at this point. So we can come back to that, and let's go to the section where it says budget changes, and let's talk about where we are. So the fiscal '16 operating budget is $23,832,058. And then what's presented here tonight is going to be is $25,769,848. So we're going to go through that and identify where the big changes are, but you can see on the summary page that there's, the first line is labeled budget changes. And so what we did there is we plugged back into the budget some of the changes that we've agreed to throughout this year, like the academic affairs position that we've already approved, so that got put back into the budget. The supervisor building and grounds position, that's in the budget as well. There's the assistant principal at Wire Village. That's been taken out of school choice, but we've moved that over into the budget to reflect that. Also included in the budget, and in that first line, the change in that line, is the $813,000 debt payment. So the debt payment kind of skews this change in budget, because it's quite significant, just under half of what the changes are. The next line down will show you what the change is based on the Unit A contract. So you can see in the current fiscal year, the cost of the Unit A contract was $8,696,575,000, and in the upcoming year, it's $8,762,982. So it's only a change of $66,406, and some of that reflects the fact that some teachers with tenure or seniority have retired, and we've replaced them at a lower level. So it's really not indicative that salary increases were only $66,000. Salary increases reflect the fact that, you know, more senior teachers got replaced with new teachers at a lower pay scale. The Unit C change, based on the contract that was negotiated, that impacts the budget by an additional $23,164 or so. And then in the current year, we still, we ended up with close to $60,000 in the budget remaining for Lake Street School for utilities and some expenses in closing it, and of course, nothing budgeted for next year, so there's a $59,000 savings there. And then all the other changes in the budget, which were less than 2% or 3%, amount to a $46,000 decrease in the budget overall. So the change in the operating budget, you know, apples to apples, is $1,460,000, of which $813,000 is the debt payment. In addition to that, based on discussions that we've already had, there were requests put forth by the administrative team for priority items to move the district forward based on the district improvement plan, building safety and soundness, and some other items. So those requests, and there's a list of those, and when we get into it, total $477,700. So we get down to the final budget that's being presented tonight of $25,769,849 as compared to $23,832,59 in the current year, for a change of $1,937,700. as compared to $23,832,59 in the current year, for a change of $1,937,790. So if you flip to the next page, we can walk through the big changes in the budget, and so you can kind of stop me as we go. So, just so you, just for a point of comparison, when we're looking at the 2016 budget column, those budget numbers reflect the budget after we've made transfers in this fiscal year. So it's not the operating, it's not the budget that we adopted originally, it's the budget that was originally adopted and then amended by transfers that we've made throughout this year. So some things, it can go either way, we can, we can compare it to the original budget or not, but it seems that the budget that we've, the transfer should be reflected, because that's more, you know, realistic as to what we need in these line items. So you can see, District Business Clerical Salaries is up by $11,949, and the District Business Contracted Services is down by $14,925. The School Committee Legal Account is down by $75,000. The Academic Affairs Position, again, that was not in the budget in 2016. We were paying for that from school choice accounts, and in the '17 budget, fiscal '17, we're going to show that budget on its own. So that's, you know, roughly $101,000 or so that's added to the budget. District Transportation, again, we're in the process of putting that out to bid, so we've, we've budgeted a, you know, five, five, just under a 6% increase in the cost of transportation, based on what we've seen happening in other districts. So that, that's $53,000. Same thing with the McKinney-Vento, which is the homeless transportation. We've, you know, allowed for an increase in that as well. The next line is the Buildings and Ground Supervisor. The committee approved the $85,000 salary amount. It's, it's not in the current year's budget, but we're showing it as an, as an operating item to be added in the next, in the '17 budget. District Maintenance of Equipment, we all know that most of the equipment that we have in the district is pretty old and dated, except for the new pickup dump truck that we finally got. So it seemed that a modest increase from $12,000 to $15,000 would be anticipated for things like lawn mowers, tractors, and some of the other pickup trucks that we're still using that are, you know, more than 10 or 12 years old. District Employment Retirement, that is the assessment that we pay to Worcester County Retirement for non-teaching positions, and that's, that's pretty much a non-negotiable item. The $500,000 amount is the, we were notified by the, by the retirement board that that is going to be our assessment for the upcoming year. So that $37,000 increase is, is figured into the budget. Active Employee Health Insurance, again, we've been going back and forth with axial benefits, and they're anticipating a pretty hefty increase in premium in the next year. So we're still working on that, but at this point in time, we're anticipating a 6% increase in that cost and that line item. And there's also built into there some additional benefits for, for the positions that we've talked about, like the academic affairs and supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. District Unemployment, it seems that we don't need $133,000 in that line item, so we've reduced it to 100, so there's a $33,000 savings there. Non-professional retirees' health insurance, again, there's a modest increase in that, based upon anticipated premium increases that we're hearing from the companies, from providers, and the same with the life insurance. District Building Insurance, that, we budgeted a small increase in that. We've had some pretty substantial claims on our policy this year, based on the snow and ice from last year. We, we collected almost $40,000 for that, and then the most recent claim that was put in was for the pipe break at the high school and the asbestos. So I'm anticipating there might be a small increase in premium based on those claims. District Bonds, that's what we, that's the bond that covers the treasurer, and we're also anticipating that we're going to need bonds to cover the principals that have student activity accounts. I don't think we've ever had bonds on them, so they should be bonded if they're going to be handling the checking accounts. The next, the next account is the, the debt payment on the East Brookfield School, so that's just a scheduled payment, and it's scheduled to go up by $10,000. The next line is, of course, the deficit loan payment. We would normally pay $175,000, that's what we've paid in the current fiscal year, and we're budgeting to pay off the entire loan at $813,000, so that's a $638,000 increase. And again, the next three items are just interest on those loans, and, you know, they're calculated, there's, there's no change, nothing we can do about that, so those are some small increases there. Again, charter school tuition, that's, that's provided to us by the state through the cherry sheet, and that's what we anticipate. And then, the last part, the last number in that section, is the required contribution to the Supplemental Reserve Fund, which was established under the deficit legislation. So it's based on an increase, a small increasing percentage of our prior year's operating budget. In this case, the $178,000 is .75% of the current year's operating budget. So you can see, that section pretty much accounts for the large majority of the change in the budget so far. Then we get down to Wire Village. Again, the hundred, the principal salary is really principal and assistant, and the difference there is the assistant's salary that was paid for out of a different revenue source, and now we're putting it back in the budget. That's the $84,000. The custodial salaries, we've budgeted to add a part-time custodian in the afternoon here at Wire Village, mainly because there are some needs due to the after-school program, so we need some additional custodial staff. But, but that, that's a decrease because we had a longtime custodian that's retiring this next month. So, again, it's similar to the teachers, we have a custodian going out at a high pay rate, and we were replacing him at a lower rate. So even the addition of another part-time custodian, we're still budgeting less money than the current year. Again, Wire Village Maintenance of Buildings and the HVAC accounts, we talked about this at a previous meeting. We agreed that all the building maintenance accounts, except the high school, should increase by $10,000 to take care of the needs that we've recognized and seen over this past year. And the same with the HVAC. You'll see the $5,000 increase in all the other buildings, and that's to cover additional maintenance costs to get a vendor in here to look at the heating systems and the, all the mechanical systems over the summer, instead of waiting for them to break and, and paying a premium to get those things fixed. Getting down to Knox Trail Custodial Salaries, same thing there. We have agreed to hire a full-time custodian to replace a retiring part-timer. That's the difference in pay. And the same thing with the building maintenance accounts, as I talked about earlier. Scrub cough drop.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks. Take a minute, take a minute. No, we got to keep going. So East Brookfield, same change there, Maintenance of Buildings and HVAC, $10,000 in Maintenance of Buildings, and additional $5,000 in HVAC. We've already talked about that. David Proudy High School, the change in the principal memberships and dues is mainly because we're adding a $5,000 cost for the NIASC accreditation that's coming up. Graduation expenses, just reduced by a small amount of money. They didn't spend what they had in the current year, so it seems to be that that would be a sufficient amount of money, $7,500. The textbooks, again, we've been down this road. We spent $16,500 in the current year to upgrade AP textbooks, and we're budgeting $20,000 in the next year's budget to continue the cycle of replacing textbooks. Athletic Transportation is up a bit. We found that there were some teams that were driving themselves to competitions, and that's not anything that we want to have any liability for, so there's going to be some increased cost of transportation, so we can cover all those, all those sports teams. Custodial salaries, same as Knox Trail. We had a, we, we replaced a part-timer with a full-timer, and so that is the difference in, in pay. Pay, and, and the afternoon custodians also get a shift differential, so it's a little bit there. Custodial Supplies, the high school is woefully under budgeted, and they could use some updates on some of the custodial, small equipment, not large equipment, that they need to get the floors buffed and cleaned, and just basic supplies. And then the Heating, again, it's hard to tell what's going to happen with heating costs, but it looks like this year we may be close to the 105, so just put a little insurance in there and, and move that up to 110,000, so an increase of 5,000 there. The Asbestos Remediation, we all know that we're doing some work. We had scheduled to do work in February, but because of the break, we put it off until April, and we anticipate that to be $20,000. The $50,000 amount is additional work that we plan to do over the summer, replacing ceiling tiles and some additional floor tiles. That's actually going to be going out to bid in the next couple of weeks, so we'll have a better idea on what that number is, and I'm sure on Thursday, when we have representatives from ATC here, they can talk about the schedule and the timing for that sort of work. And then again, the high school, the HVAC budget, we increased that by $10,000. Those systems are old, and there's, there's plenty of problems there, so I think, you know, hopefully, hopefully that's a one-time increase, and then we can drop it back next year, once we get on a schedule and we have somebody come in and take a look at those Going on to the Pupil Services and Special Education, there's just some minor changes in there. Again, the professional, administrative professional salaries, it's, it's a matter of replacing, you know, a longtime employee with a, with a new employee at a lesser amount. And then the Tuitions, we're, it's hard to tell at this point what we're going to need, but we, we've just budgeted some estimated increases there, based on what, what we know So those, that's the $1.476 million changes, so it reflects the custodial staffing that we've done, some of the, like the textbooks, the other new positions that we've added. So it's, there's, there's really, it's all kind of things we've already talked about. The next section just walks you through the changes as a result of the Unit A contract, the teacher's contract, and it just kind of shows you where those, where those changes, where they are. So you can see, you know, I'm not going to go through them all, but Wire Village Teacher Salaries is up $115,000. Wire Village Special Education is up $10,000. Guidance Salaries is up $1,600. And so many of those are, are straight, you know, changes in the salary schedule, going from one step to another. And, and in the case of the high school, you'll see a decrease of $111,000, because there's been turnover there, and again, it's been, we've been fortunate enough to find, you know, qualified teachers, newer teachers that start at a lower step. So the Unit A impact on the current budget increases the bottom line by $66,406. And then the last page is just the impact of Unit C, and you can see that's clerical salaries, the paraprofessionals, clerks and aides, and you can just go through those lines, but for the most part, they're pretty consistent. And the $23,000 is purely just the, the impact of the raises that they got in their new So those are the highlights of, of what changed in the budget, and the next section, I think, is just an analysis of excess and deficiency that we anticipate. We anticipate getting a certification of $917,462 this year, and as we've discussed, if we're going to pay the debt, we would apply $813,000 of that to the debt, leaving us $104,000 in E and D that we could either apply to other places or roll it over into next year. And so, so the next section is, is the actual budget. It's the actual breakdown, line by line, all the lines, not just the ones that we went over with changes. But more importantly, on the summary page, you'll see, again, the preliminary budget totals $25,292,148. And then, below that, are the budget requests that were prioritized and brought forward by the administrative team, and it's what they feel, what we feel, is needed to bring the district forward, and to make the improvements necessary to improve test scores, retain staff and students, and maybe even turn around the, the school choice out program and get people, get kids to come back in. So, just basically, we've got the instructional, district-wide instructional programs, $189,000, that's made up of some reading programs, some math programs, I think some science programs, textbooks, materials, and so forth. The ASOP software that we talked about, that's, it's an attendance software, mostly for teachers. When they call in, they can, they can do it online, and the software will automatically find a substitute and take care of all that, and take that right out of the hands of the principals. And it will also dovetail into our budgeting and payroll software, so the attendance can flow right into that, and rather than having pieces of paper, you know, be emailed and handed down and, and sent to us through inter-office mail. I believe we talked about putting an amount in the budget for the show choir to eliminate the need for them to fundraise, and it's the feeling of, of the superintendent and the, and the whole administrative team, that the show choir shouldn't be any different than a competitive sports team. We wouldn't expect the baseball team to go out and raise the funds they need to get, you know, hire a bus to go to a game. So it shouldn't be any different for the show choir. So at this point, we put $15,000 in that budget, which should handle several competitions, the entrance fees, and the transportation to get to those competitions, and eliminate the, the need for that program to go out and raise their own money, so that they can, you know, participate in those, those competitions. Robotics and Engineering Program, I think we talked about that, the superintendent put that forth, and, and that's $10,000, and much needed, I think, at the lower levels. District-wide Curriculum Renewal, K through 8, is $20,000 for that, and that's basically textbook renewals for all the grades outside of the high school. And then, the last item in that section are additional funds for textbooks at the high, at the high school, which would be, you know, added to the $20,000 that's in the budget. And it was only, it was, I believe the superintendent talked to the librarian at the high school, and there seems to be a need that came forward late, that many of the books that are in the high school library are outdated, and need to, we need to get on a cycle of replacement for those as well. So some of that $40,000 could go towards the library. The next section are some of the staffing requests that were brought forward.
Excuse me a second, Dr. Crowe.
I just want to mention, so that the viewing audience can hear this, I did meet with the high school librarian just recently, with Dr. Jordan, and not only, and I think our student rep will probably validate this for me, not only are the materials outdated, she did a survey of the materials in the high school library, and 99% of them are outdated. So there's a real need to not just get some money into the budget to replace some books every year, and the formula is, just again, for the viewing audience in the committee, is that for every student in the high school, we should be buying one new book for the library each year, we should budget for it, which is approximately for a hardcover book between $27 and $30. So we should, we should be budgeting that amount every year, but we need to start the collection first to get it in place. So would you validate that?
That is true, and I do have one piece of information that I brought forth to the committee before I became a student rep, that I'd just like to bring up again. According to NIASC accreditation standards, we are supposed to have fiction books that are no more than 10 years old in terms of average copyright. So we should be at the 2006-ish range. They'll give a little bit of leeway if it's a year or two out of date. Ours is currently 1993, so it's, it's quite a bit out of date. Ours is currently 1993, so it's, it's quite a bit out of date.
That was part of that 99% figure that she did the survey on. Thank you, Mr. Suda.
Okay, so getting into the next section are the additional staffing requests that, um, that the administrative team feels are, are needed to, to move the district forward. There's a halftime ELL teacher, 30,000 dollars, uh, the public relations and communications, um, position that would help us manage the website, um, and, and communicate, you know, either electronically or in written form to the communities. There's a, a special education teacher at, at Wire Village, one full-time, uh, position for 55,000. There are three full-time special education paraprofessionals, uh, 66,000 dollars in total, and then a regular education paraprofessional at Wire Village for 30,000 dollars. So those, those total up to 477,700. In addition to that, um, we may, we may be required to add a fourth-grade teacher at, at Wire Village, um, due to some special, uh, needs of the students. So if that's the case, that would add an, an additional 55,000 dollars to that total, bringing it up to 532,700, and then adjusting the bottom line from 25,769,000 to 25,824,000. So, how, how would you like to proceed with the discussion?
Say about the PIA communications piece?
Dr. Crowe?
Under the, um, public relations communications piece, it's not necessarily a staffing request, as much as it may be cost of materials to produce. Uh, Ms. Messier had shown me something that Leicester has done to promote their programs, if you recall, those are very, those are fairly pricey to produce, so that, that's really aimed at that, it's not necessarily a person, there'll be a person involved in producing it, but it's not the person, we, it's materials more so.
Okay. Uh, Gary, do you have a breakdown of that final number assessment wise?
I do, so if we go, so if we go back to that assessment page that we looked at at the beginning, and this calculation doesn't include the fourth-grade teacher that we just talked about, includes everything else. So, if we look at the current year, and I'll just, I'll just walk you through, if you look at the fiscal year 16 column, and we look at state revenue, chapter 70, in the current fiscal year, we are budgeted to collect 13,448,544 dollars. Based on the governor's budget that came out, the projected amount for the next fiscal year is 13,492,619 dollars, so it's a .33% increase totaling 44,075 dollars. Chapter 71, the transportation, again, that's a, that's a very modest increase, 3.4%, totaling 17,000 dollars. Uh, the McKinney-Vento, they don't, they don't put numbers out for that, that's kind of an, uh, after-the-fact amount that will get reimbursed based on, uh, what we use, and then charter school reimbursement, again, um, 10,000 dollars in the current year, and, uh, almost 8,000 dollars, you know, budgeted for next year. So, uh, overall, state revenue is only up by .42%, going from 13,956,000 to 14,15,000 dollars, uh, a 58,000 dollar increase, so not, not very much, uh, in that area. Going on to the district revenue section, Medicaid reimbursement, in the current fiscal year, we had budgeted 69,100 dollars, um, and next year, uh, we're budgeting 150,000 dollars. We had some payments that came in, uh, they were timing differences, so when we did the budget last year, uh, we budgeted that low, uh, and this year, we have a better handle on, uh, how that, how that revenue's flowing in, so the 150,000 dollars is a more accurate budget, uh, and it's realistic that we'll, we'll, uh, we'll attain that amount. The other financing source is the, uh, use of the E and D to offset the debt payment, and then the investment income is 5,200 dollars, so we have total district revenue of 968,200 budgeted for next year, and we had 74,300 budgeted in the current year, so it's an 893,000 dollar increase, but the majority of that is the use of E and D to offset the debt payment. So, now we get into the assessment calculations for the two communities. So we, 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 in the past, we've always broken this down by what is the minimum required assessment, and then the, the assessment over the minimum to get to a total operating assessment, then we calculate a transportation assessment, which is the cost of regular and special education transportation, less, uh, any reimbursement from the state, and then the debt assessment is pretty much attributable, attributable to each community, so East Brookfield pays the debt on its building, and Spencer pays the debt on its building. So, bottom line, in, in the current fiscal year that we're in, the East Brookfield assessment totals 1,957,969 dollars, and based on the budget that we just talked about, which totals 25 million, their assessment would go up to 2,147,303. It's a 9.67% increase, and the amount is 189,000 dollars over the current year. The Spencer assessment, same, same methodology, um, when you get to the bottom, the current year's assessment is 7,842,958 dollars, uh, and based on the budget that we just talked about, the, the estimated assessment for the upcoming year would be 8,638,860 dollars, which equates to a 10.15% increase, or 795,901 dollars. So we get down to the bottom line, where we have, and this is a good thing, we wanna make sure that our total revenues of 25,769,000 offset our total expenditures of 25,769,000. So clearly, those are big increases to the communities, um, and this, this assessment calculation doesn't take into the fact that we can do, we can do other things and apply other revenues to this, we, we wanted to present the, you know, the, the budget as it was put forth by the administration, and then put it out to the committee to give us some guidance on an amount or a percentage, you know, do you, a percentage that you feel is, um, palatable to the communities, yet will still allow us to achieve what needs to be achieved, uh, as put forth by the administration.
Well, uh, I, I think the committee has made it clear that, um, we intend to support what the administration has come forward with, uh, for a budget figure, so at this point, I'm not interested, uh, I don't think we should be interested in, in trying to slice and dice what administration is recommending, but a 10.1% increase and a 9.6 is dead on arrival, it's going nowhere. Uh, so, we have no choice, other than to look at other sources of revenue and monies that can be moved, um, uh, from the current budget to help, uh, defray, uh, some of the , uh, costs that's being projected, uh, into the 17 budget. I, I think, in order for us to, uh, move this budget forward, we've gotta be under 4% increase, uh, in assessment to the communities, we have to fall somewhere between 3 to 4% in order for us to get this budget to fly, and, uh, if we don't do that, we'll be at a district-wide meeting, and, um, and we'll be operating on from a 1/12 budget. Uh, we, we can't send this type of, um, this type of assessment down to the communities, can't speak for East Brookfield, I don't know what their position is, this would absolutely devastate, uh, the town services, uh, in, in the town of Spencer, so, uh, uh, I, I think we, we've, we've gotta support what administration is asking for, to move the district forward, but we need to look at other, uh, revenue sources that we have available, uh, to try to defray that cost, so that we can get the number down to a workable, uh, amount, uh, to deal with both communities. Anyone else have any comments, uh, Vinnie?
I, I have questions.
Okay.
Uh, I, I wanna go back to the budget, and, and I have questions regarding just a couple of things.
Just refer it to what page you're on.
I'm on, well...
What section you're in? What section?
Well, it's right after the green piece of pa- no.
Which one?
Which one?
Yeah, okay, the preliminary budget breakdown, fiscal 2017.
Okay.
It's the one, i- i- it's the cover sheet...
Summary of the...
With the summary page, which shows the additional request.
Everybody got that?
No.
So my, my first question is, what are we doing about the East Brookfield boiler? And that's not even on here.
Right. So we thought that it wasn't an immediate need, and it was something that we could defer until the following year.
Yeah, we could.
No, I, I, look, I think the...
We did discuss that.
Yeah, we, no, we, we did, and even, uh, I don't think Ron's here, but...
No, he left.
He had agreed that it wasn't anything, he wanted to make sure it gets, it was brought up and that we don't forget about it, but he didn't feel like it was something that needed to be addressed immediately in the next budget. His words.
That's not the impression that I got, was I sitting at a different meeting?
That's what, that's what he communicated to us most recently.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
To Mike, is, is that your impression that this thing can be put off?
Um, we need to get, I know we, we had talked about getting a professional in there to see what, you know, to see what we need, and I know that, I know the town wanted to be involved in the whole process as well, as I, but I don't, you know, I, I haven't been apprised of what, you know, your conversations.
The only thing that I'm aware of is, Chair, is that we got a very scathing letter from the East Brookfield selectmen, or one of the members, about a pipe that broke over there, and about us not, uh, maintaining proper maintenance and, uh, being negligent in our duties of taking care of the building, so we need to have a clear understanding as to, you know, what's going on here.
Well, I, I think it would be, we're aware of a problem, a significant problem, with a boiler that's relatively new, it's certainly out of warranty, we, we've gone down that whole road, it's, it's, it's either we fix it, or, and I was kinda, you know, half-tongued and cheek, but it's kind of a reality, if we wait till winter and it fails, it's gonna cost an awful lot more money to fix that boiler in the middle of a, of a winter, I just don't think that that's a good idea.
When we presented with two, uh, one was a repair and one was a complete replacement?
Yeah, I, I pulled it out, I mean, the repair of that boiler was gonna cost us 40 to 50, uh, rebuild, was 40 to 50,000 dollars was the estimate, the replacement was 100,000 dollars, and it was my understanding that we talked about it, um, although it is a, you know, uh, certainly, uh, under the care, control, custody of the district, uh, i- i- it would be, it is a building that is owned by the town of East Brookfield, and, and I thought we were gonna send a letter to the selectmen stating our intent to replace that boiler, and, uh, you know, find out how they wanted to fund it. I- it's not a district expense, but I mean, it's gonna get paid for through the district, certainly...
And assessed.
And get assessed out, but we, we, we need to, you know, involve them in that commu- I don't think that it makes any sense at all to put that off, and whether we do it inside the budget, outside the budget, I'm just saying, I think it's a need that needs to be discussed, and this is the right time to be discussing it, and we, we can't take it off our radar, unless somebody knows something that I don't know, but that's certainly not the indication that I got from, from Mike, I believe you were there with the carrier guy?
Yes, yeah, I was. Can, through Mr., to Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mike.
Can we get a letter out to the, to the selectmen?
Why don't we flag this, uh, get a letter out to them, uh, tomorrow, and discuss this further on Thursday? Perhaps, uh, we can s- send a letter out, but maybe you just need to get on the phone and make a call, uh, to them, and speak to them over there, and find out what the wishes of, of the board is, as to what they would like to do. As Vinnie said, it's, it's not a district expense, I mean, we'll pay for it, and it's just gonna be assessed out to East Brookfield, so...
But, but I don't think it's, it's fair to just, I mean, do it, if, if they, they may wanna rebuild it.
Right, let them make the call.
And that's fine, I mean, if they feel that that's a wise investment, uh, to rebuild it, that's, that's fine, uh, but I just don't think we should wait till it fails.
Right.
Because the, the issues will be much more significant if that happens. That said...
Mr. Chairman. Second, uh, Mike?
Um, we actually have one of the selectmen present tonight, Ted Boule, and if we, you know, could we step out of line and have him come down to the podium, just so we can...
What you wish, uh, Vinnie?
Whatever you wanna do, Mr. Chairman, that's fine.
Just, just to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Ted, uh, you hear the conversation about the boiler, have you folks discussed this, and do you have any preference as far as whether it's replaced, or whether it's, uh, fixed? You, you heard the discussion, uh, we, we pay the cost, and we're just gonna assess it out to you anyways, has your board come up with any determinations of what you'd like, wish to do with it? Okay.
Larry's been the point first on that.
Okay.
We gotta talk about it. Now that we do it on...
So then, maybe the best thing to do is to, is to, uh, ask the superintendent to have the comptroller contact, uh, the, the selectmen tomorrow, speak to Larry, uh...
Certainly, add this to the bill, pass all that along.
Yeah.
For the difference in cost between replacement and repair, uh, you know, but, uh, I, I think we would, uh, rather let that call be yours, and I, I think, and...
Well, yeah, I certainly would like to see them make that call, whether, on all fronts, whether we rebuild it, replace it, we do it now, we put it off, uh, we all know that if we wait for that inevitable day, it's never gonna be on a 70-degree day that that's gonna fail.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right, we'll, we'll, um, we'll have, uh...
The original boiler.
Harry to, to, uh, make that contact, okay?
Seven years, eight years?
No, it's...
Oh, it's more than that.
Well, we'll do that tomorrow and...
What was the school bill, Kevin?
Yeah, 2001, three.
Getting old.
Hmm. Um, all right, Mr. Chairman, my other questions, uh, so, district-wide instructional programs, I'm back to my original, uh, list that, I do keep everything, and, uh, it's the list where we started to look at the additional budget requests from the district. Can somebody tell me what's in this 189,200, please?
Gary?
Sure, give me a second.
Yep.
Do you wanna look at this? That's, that's the list I have.
Yeah, I've got it all.
Marked up somewhere? Yeah, okay. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was the science program throughout the district and the mathematics, uh, K through eight.
Yeah, it's, it's the writing programs in each, in each place, the reading programs in each place.
Is it the, uh, the Engage New York as well?
Yep, it's all that.
Okay, so it's, it's all the educational programs? The Empowering Writers and, uh, is that Fountain, Foundations, Early Literacy Programs?
Yep.
Yes.
That, that as well? I just wanna be sure, that's all, I wanna understand it.
Both of them together.
I thought that's what we did, but I wasn't quite sure, and I, I couldn't find my notes on it.
Are you good with that, Ben?
Uh, I, I would just like...
I'll keep looking while you...
Confirm it, so then, I know we wanna deal with the 2017 budget, but I, I, I need to talk about this stuff with this year's budget, is that going to be paid for? Are any of these items, ASOP software, show choir, robotics, district-wide curriculum, K through 12, uh, books, those one, two, three, four, five, six items going to be paid for out of the 2016 budget? That is my question.
So I can, I can answer some of that, um, the ASOP software, we can definitely buy out of this year's budget, the show choir is gonna pertain to next year's, uh, program, so we can't do that out of this year's budget.
Yep.
Uh, the robotics and engineering program, those are probably supplies and materials that we could buy now, uh, and the district-wide curriculum, uh, again, we could probably, uh, take care of that, and the textbooks in the current year's, uh, budget. I'm not sure about the district, the superintendent will have to talk about what's involved in the...
Dr. Crowe?
I just wanna point out that some of those costs, as an example, ASOP, while ASOP, um, could be done now, it is a recurring cost to keep that system updated year to year, to have the user accounts, number one, um, school dude would fall into that same kinda category, any of those things with software would, will have to be updated, um, and relicensed. The robotics is a recurring, because these are, these are kits, and these are materials that over time will not, you can't take 'em back apart, you need new ones to rebuild the robotics, so some of these are recurring amounts, um, many of the Engage New York, those are consumables, so some of these, these costs are recurring costs, because the, the materials that we use for students, and they are consumables.
And I do understand that. However, if we're using them in two thousand and seventeen, but purchasing them before June thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen out of this year's budget, they don't need to be in the seventeen budget as well. They need to be, again, placed in the eighteen budget. Or somebody correct me if my logic on this is wrong.
Well, it buys us a year, right, for the increased percentage?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Would buy us a year for the increased percentage of the, so it would change that percentage. It would lower it a little bit for this year and defer it to next year's increase.
Well, right, if you're, if you're, you're pre-buying, so to speak, for next year, you don't need it in next year's budget. You'll need it again if it's a consumable in, in the eighteen budget when you prepare for that, but you won't need it in next year's budget. Look, I'm trying to nickel and dime here. We're not talking about big items. I get that. I'm trying to be as frugal as possible. I, I, it's, it's, it's not that I don't support any of this. I'm, I'm saying if we're doing it, which is the support of this board, why are we doing it, kinda paying for it twice?
Can I answer that?
Dr. Crowe?
Just to answer your question, some of these materials we need to have before the school year starts, so we would need it in the budget to have it for the following year. See what I mean?
But if it's in the two thousand and eighteen budget, that budget starts three months before school starts the following year?
No, I, I do understand that.
I, I understand your-
We're investing for the following year.
Yeah, I, I understand Vinnie's point. We're, we're pre-purchasing them, and so they're not gonna be used until the following year, so the cost really doesn't come up until fiscal two eighteen, but they seem like small amounts, but we're probably at two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
About two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Kind of made a suggestion.
Yeah, Dr. Crowe?
If, if, that's why Mr. Suter and I are looking for guidance from the board.
Yeah.
If you tell us where we wanna end up, then we'll go back and we will look at places that we can make, Mr. Suter, correct? We've had this discussion that we're looking for the guidance so that we can then go back and say, then here's what we need to do, based on our needs.
I, I agree with-
The constant reprioritization, basically, is what it is.
I think this is something that we need to put on the table, to be looked at, to come back for our Thursday.
Okay.
Does everybody agree with that? Everybody else agree with that?
Again, I'm not, Mr. Chairman, I wanna make sure that we're putting it on the table. I'm not putting it on the table to, to, to eliminate the request.
Exactly, right.
It's, it's, it's a methodology of payment. That's all we're talking about here.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody good with that? All right, okay.
My, my next questions, and then I'll relinquish the floor to others, I'm sure there's other people have questions, are with the additional staffing. I, one, two, three, four, five additional staffing. I'd like somebody to explain this, because although one-time reoccurring revenue is, is great, to use one-time funds for, I'm concerned with this, because this is being built into a budget, you know, and we're looking at adding five FTEs, one, two, three, yeah, five, five and a half, excuse me, five and a half. And the follow-up to that question is, do these numbers include benefits? Because they look extremely low.
Gary?
Yeah, no, the numbers are just salary numbers.
Great salary.
Right.
Okay, so, what's our estimate? Is, is it twelve to fourteen thousand dollars?
About thirteen.
Thirteen? Okay.
We use thirteen.
Per, per FTE?
Yep.
So, it's another sixty-some-odd thousand dollars.
Right.
This half-time ELL teacher-
Can I address that?
Does that create a full-time ELL teacher somewhere?
No.
Or is it a true half-time person?
Dr. Crowe?
I'd ask Ms. Chariotta to, because these positions fall within her purview.
So, there are five positions. I'll ask, I'll answer your last question first. The part-time ELL is in response to increased ELL support needs. We have a full-time ELL teacher coordinator currently. We have an increased number of students entering the district with support needs that are already identified, that will increase the need for support time. So, our ELL teacher, our one teacher, is visiting about a dozen students in four different buildings currently, and she's spread as thin as she can be spread. And, and this is a regulatory requirement. We're required to provide those ELL support services to meet our minimum required needs.
I, I'm not questioning the need, Carla. I'm questioning just the, the expense and trying to quantify it in my own mind. Is, is, is this half-time person benefit-eligible?
No, this is a point-five position that's recommended, so, no.
It's not benefit-eligible in the district, okay. All right, thank you on that one.
Would you like me to answer the question regarding the other positions?
I, I would love you to explain them.
Yeah, okay. So, we have, as I've mentioned to the board in the past, we have three already identified positions for paraprofessionals that are identified under support needs, identified in, in educational plans, again, required positions to provide supports to students that have been identified to be in area of need. We have one additional teacher for special education at Wire Village School. The need for that teacher, if you look at the numbers that we're seeing for students, the number of teacher and instructional hours, our instruct, our instructional supports for students with special needs at Wire Village are much lower than they really should be. We have five grade levels. We have four teachers. So, we're really looking to increase the supports to our students. The sooner we can get those, and, and I know you folks know this, the sooner we can get those supports to students, the better the outcome for those students. And then, the last is a fourth-grade teacher. That's a general ed teacher. However, again, that is a mandated requirement based on an educational plan for students, because we have a mandate for lower numbers to meet the needs of students with disabilities at that grade level. And typically, in the past, we've reduced, we've gone from having five third-grade classes to four, fourth-grade classes. If we do that, we'll be out of our compliance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
That, that's all I have for right now. I'll relinquish the floor. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Heather?
I just had a question about the ELL population in the district. Is it rising? And about how many ELL students do we have across the district? I don't know if you know that offhand.
Again, we have about a dozen students receiving ELL support needs. We have incoming students that will, so, yes, we're seeing that rising across the district. We're also seeing it rise across the state, so I anticipate that along the same lines that we're seeing statewide, we'll continue to see that increase take place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? Mike?
Yes, um, uh, let's see. Page four of the preliminary budget breakdown. Um, Wire Village nurses' professional salaries. Are we gonna continue to have two nurses at this school? I know this was something that had come up in the past.
Dr. Crowe?
Actually, Ms., is Ms. Jollicar still here?
No.
Ms. Jollicar didn't leave. Ms. Jollicar has prepared a report that is fairly extensive, that the numbers and the needs at Wire Village are more than double what they are at any other school. It's just the population that happens to be there. I don't know if you have more information you wanna address, but we have very serious concerns about liability. We do not staff that with two nurses. Do you have anything to add?
So, Mrs. Jollicar did, in fact, complete some, some extensive analysis of the data. We took a look at that analysis, and we're facing some serious risk for students. We are, nurse, currently, our nurses here at Wire Village are, are pretty straight out. They're responding to a number of student needs. Their numbers are about double any other school in the district. In addition, our, our nursing staff provide mutual coverage for each other, which reduces our need to either be unstaffed for nursing, which creates a significant safety risk for students, or the need to bring in additional very high-cost nursing subs, because our nursing subs, under our sub-agreement, are very difficult to bring in. Often, we have to contract that. The rate is between two hundred and fifty and four hundred dollars a day to contract for a nurse to come in to sub, sub from an agency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I look forward to Ms., Mrs. Jollicar's report on that, 'cause I know-
Dr. Crowe, can you, can you-
Can I bring that through, Steve?
Yeah, can you get it out to, to members electronically tomorrow, and then, and then we can have it for Thursday?
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
All right, anyone else? So, we're, we're back to, we're back to the point of, of giving some direction as far as the percent that we're interested in looking at. I arbitrarily suggest that somewhere between three to four percent. Does anybody have anything different than that, or do you agree with that, or do you wanna go two to four percent? Need to give some, some direction to the Comptroller and to administration as to how dig we, how deep we would like them to dig into the revenue streams to try to reduce this number.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Vinnie?
So, I guess I'll take a shot at it. You know, I, I kinda summarized it in my statement earlier. You know, there's been a lot of change in three years. We closed two buildings in the town of Spencer that were probably needed to be closed years ago.
Right.
But, but it didn't happen, and we, we did it, and we, we somewhat rushed to get them done. We rearranged, you know, classes in, in our existing buildings, or our buildings that remained, twice. We've, you know, discombobbled the, the students and certainly the staff, and, you know, Ron Tomlin, who I, I don't see him out there, I don't know if he's left, but did a yeoman's job two years going, doing a, a lot of that work for us, and, you know, we, we've explained to the town fathers that we've kinda turned over all those rocks that had little bits of money under them. And they weren't little bits of money, but I mean, when we closed Maple Street, you know, we had some savings.
Right.
We realized that savings, but that was one-time savings. We were never gonna see it again. When we closed Lake Street, it's a one-time savings. I think we're, we're probably running this district about as efficiently as we possibly can run it right now. I think it's, I think it's great that our buildings are, they're not full to capacity, but they're certainly, you know, significantly fuller than they were. And I think that's great. That's the way a school district should run efficiently, and, and allows you to run efficiently. But, there's no more buckets of money to, to, no rocks to turn over. I, I think that we, we've explained to the town fathers that, that there'll be a need to, to support education and to, to, to put the money into education moving forward. I agree with you, your opening statement about a ten percent or ten-point-some-odd percent, you know, increase in a budget is, is not gonna fly, and it can't fly. And, and we certainly have some E and D funds that we can put towards this budget and, and certainly try to work with the two communities, and, and I think we should. I think we owe it to them. You know, in the big picture, it's not our money. It, it's certainly, you know, it, we, we should look at it as not our money. It, it's the taxpayers' money. And certainly the taxpayers want a good school district, and certainly they want improvements. And certainly, the town fathers themselves have said to us, you need to do these things, and rightfully so, like I said. I don't wanna reiterate everything I already said, but we need to do things on our own. We need to be able to pay for some of the capital expenses on our own. So, we need to be able to set that money aside so that we have it available to us when the need arises. But, all of that said, I think we need to do whatever it takes to lower that burden. But, I think there should be an open and honest discussion between the administration and the town fathers from Spencer, Andy's Brookfield, and explain to them, look, I would even be willing to, not knowing what next year's revenues are gonna look like and, and next year's budget's gonna look like, but I'd be willing to do a, a three-year proposal, or a two- or three-year proposal, in which we, we throw money at this as best we can to help offset those assessments for year one, in some methodical way, not just to throw a bucket of money at it. And, and show that to the, to, to the town fathers, to the finance committees, to the voters, so they understand what we're doing. And, and, and do that again in year two, so that, you know, we, we continue to offset that. But, in year three, that's it. This is what it is, because I don't think the district can survive having to take care of a lot of its capital needs that we have, and, and we know we have significant capital needs, and repairs, and upkeep, by, by continuing taking any available ed money that we have, E and D money, excuse me, and throwing it at the, the local assessments. It just, it's, it's a recipe for disaster. It's not a good plan. It's not sustainable. We need to, we need to make sure what we're gonna do is sustainable. And I can't even sit here tonight and tell you what that number is. You're asking me to pull a rabbit out of a hat, so to speak, and I don't mean that currently. I just mean that honestly. You know, pick a number, you know, one to ten. It's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough way to do it. I would rather the Comptroller come back to us with our options, because I don't necessarily, from where I sit, know every single dollar that's available that's not earmarked for something, because I know we're juggling an awful lot of different things. We're juggling a roof on the building, on, on the B building. We're juggling asbestos abatement and, and complete remediation, you know, air quality issues. We're, we're just get a lot of things that are, we're juggling right now, and I, I won't claim to be knowledgeable of exactly where we are on everything. So, I, I think rather than pull rabbits out of hats, I, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, a budget meeting.
Yeah.
I'd certainly rather see the Comptroller come back, work with the administration, and, and come back and, and tell us what we can do. I mean, I, I talked about two hundred and seventy, or eighty-five thousand, I think I added up, to be dollars' worth of, of items that maybe we can do something with. That's not peanuts, two hundred and, that, that's significant dollars. That's something that's significant, not to do without it, just to determine how we're gonna pay for it, so. That would be my suggestion. I'll certainly listen to other board members, see what they wanna do, and maybe that'll change my mind, but other than that, I, I'm not really fond of pulling rabbits out of hats. I'm just not.
Well, I, I understand that, but I'm also cognizant of the, the fact that we've got a meeting on Thursday, and then we're gonna vote a budget next Tuesday, so it's not like we've got, you know, five meetings to try to hash this thing out. Administration is asking us to give them some direction. I think we need to give them some direction. We've said we know ten percent ain't gonna work, so let's tell them it's five or under gonna work, or, or, I, I think we've gotta give some direction, or the clock's gonna run out on us here. I, I think the, what, what I don't wanna see happen is, is, I don't think there's, anyone will have any problem here using money that we have in E and D or other revenue services for, for capital projects, that we finally got ourselves in a position where we can address some of those issues and stuff. But, we're gonna start talking about putting positions in the budget and stuff, and positions that we've been beaten to death over for the past two and a half years, about having facility directors and curriculum coordinators and special ed people. That stuff needs to go into budget, and the towns need to pony up for that. And, and so, I, I wanna see those type of directions coming from administration, but I think, so, we told them ten's not gonna work. So, they're gonna come back with eight and a half on Thursday, and then where are we? You know, we're, we're back to, we got one meeting left on Tuesday to come up with a number, so I, I think we've gotta stand pat on the idea that we're gonna support what administration is telling us they need, but we're not gonna support sending down some number that's gonna cripple both of the communities and stuff. And therein, therein lies the rub for administration and the Comptroller to look at what we have at various revenue sources and stuff, what can be put at this to try to get the number down to a reasonable number. But, I think we've, I think we've gotta give them some type of direction, otherwise they're, they're just gonna leave here tonight still looking for a needle in a haystack.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might, if we, if we were to do something in some way, get the, the assessments increases down to somewhere between two and four percent, let's just- the assessments increases down to somewhere between 2% and 4%, let's just pick 3. It's an easy number. Let's just talk about it for a second. We're at 10%. This budget is 10% over. So if you just take that 3% this year, or 3 and 1/4%, or 3 and 3/3%, that means it's going to take three years to get to where we need to be. But each year, those increases that we talked about tonight of Unit A, the increased cost of Unit A is, I thought it was 66,400. That's this year. Now, as you heard the Comptroller say, that's due to a lot of different things. It has nothing to do with increases that were given out to Unit A employees. Has to do with attrition, has to do with new hires, you know, it has to do going out at the high end of the scale, coming in at the low end of the scale. So there's a lot of things that affect that. Next year, that number could be $300,000. Okay, above and beyond the third, that would be, you know, assessed to make up for that 10%. So I guess, without having, and we can't figure the budget for next year this year. I understand that. I do understand that. We certainly, without knowing all of that, it all impacts it, but I would say if we're going to have to give numbers out, I mean, 2% to 4%. Start there. I don't know. What's the rest of the board think?
What's the feeling of the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mike?
Maybe for tomorrow's meeting, I mean, I know this isn't going to be a popular thing, but the deficit loan payment, I mean, maybe we, rather than, rather than it affecting instructional, maybe we don't pay it off. I mean, maybe we pay half of it off and we do one more year. I mean, I just, I don't want to see, I don't want to see instructional affected. I mean, I know, I understand this deficit's been kicking us, kicking our butts for three years, but I mean, four years is still better than 10. Does anyone have any thoughts on this?
The only problem with that is you're back to using money to retire a debt, to fund reoccurring debt, and it's just, it's still a dangerous proposition. I think that we finally got ourselves in a position where we can retire that debt. We need to do so so that it doesn't remain as a stranglehold on the district, and we need to do that to move forward so that we're going to relieve ourselves of additional costs that go along with keeping that note out there. And I think that was a top priority of everybody. It's something that needs to happen. It's got to be debt-free in order to move forward, to see where we're going to go with the communities, to get them to buy in. And we can't do it on borrowed money. We've got to cut to the chase, come with a clean slate, and say to the communities, this is what we need in order to bring this district forward. And that's, there's going to be a cost factor to that, and that's when we're going to tell how strong the communities are willing to support this budget.
Mr. Chairman, my concern with that, with that issue is certainly with the reinstitution of a needs committee for the school, that debt payment's going to affect our bond rating. And we need to get in a better shape than where we are financially with the right agencies. It's not going to happen overnight. Your credit plummets very quickly, and it'd take years to rebuild it up, years. Hopefully, by the time we need that, our credit is back where it needs to be. I just think, you know, that was everyone's number-one priority. We have the funding to do it. I think we'd be making an enormous misstep. Even if we, even if everything wasn't going to change, even if the state overseer was still going to be here, you know what? I don't have a problem with that. You know, I don't enjoy it, but I don't necessarily have a huge problem with that. I've talked with the comptroller, and the comptroller has explained to me that the state overseer that we have right now has been an asset to this district. So I, that's not the biggest concern. But there are a lot of other concerns that revolve around paying that debt off. And I think for the, certainly, you know, I'm not going to be here next year, but I certainly wouldn't do something that would affect this, negatively impact this district. And I think that would be a huge misstep on our part. It's that whole thing, don't put off today, which you, you know, tomorrow till tomorrow, what you can do today. That whole budget deficit thing is, better to be paid off now than to linger.
I think one idea that you've mentioned, Vinnie, that's somewhat palatable is if we look at some of these positions and do it on a decreasing funding mechanism, you know, fund some of them, you know, for this first year, and tell the communities, whatever the percentage is, next year, we're going to fund 50%, and after that, they're going to own it, and it's going to go into the regular budget, you know? Maybe that can be looked at by administration as well in trying to get the number down.
Right. All these positions that we're adding, academic affairs, you know, facilities, I mean, this is just going to enhance the district. This is a huge, we have so many bids that need to be put out. Who's going to put those out? You know? I'm not putting them out. You're putting them out. You're not putting them out. He can't put them out. He doesn't have the time.
Well, that's the other advantage of doing what we did tonight with the needs, with the building needs committee, because that committee's got a lot of experienced people on it, a lot of these capital items we can ship off to them immediately and let them start that process and so that we can meet deadlines that we have to meet, you know?
All right. Anybody else have any other comment? Gary, were you going to?
Yeah, I just, so in light of this discussion, just so you have an idea, so if we, if we want to get that assessment number down to a 3% increase, we're looking at either additional revenue or cuts totaling about $690,000, or a combination of the two. So if that, I don't know if that...
What was the number again? I'm sorry.
$690,000 of either additional revenue or a combination of additional revenue and cuts in the budget.
To get to the 3%.
To get to a 3% increase.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's probably doable. It's probably doable.
Just to look at the example that Vinnie pointed out already with the philosophy of having to fund not until 2018, picks up almost close to half of that amount.
Right. Right. I think we can probably come back on Thursday with, you know, one or two options.
Yeah.
Somewhere in between, you know, one closer to 4%, one closer to 3%, and then kind of find some common ground there.
Yep. Angela?
Yeah, I just had a question that, I mean, I'm assuming that these positions that are state-mandated are not a part of that potential cutting, because we can't say we're cutting something and then have to hire someone anyway. I mean, I just, I, it might just be the way that Gary breaks it down, but it feels like this, this list is like the, oh, things we can get rid of.
Before you go any further, we're not cutting. We're not cutting any services that administration is asking for. We're not cutting. We're looking at different sources of revenue to fund what administration's looking for.
Right.
So we're not, you're not going to come back here Thursday and see that some of these positions have been eliminated and stuff. That's not going to happen.
Good. I like hearing that.
No problem. All right. Is everybody, everybody good with it? Anyone have an additional they want to add? Otherwise, we'll get out electronically to everybody tomorrow, that information, and we'll get, we're going to meet Thursday. Gary will make every attempt possible to try to get everything out to you electronically by hopefully Thursday morning, the latest?
Yeah.
Maybe Wednesday yet?
Yeah.
Late Wednesday afternoon or Wednesday night?
Yeah.
If possible, so everybody can have a chance to at least view things before the meeting Thursday. If not, you just don't know what's going to happen. You have to be there to believe it, but you just don't know what's going to happen. If we can do it, we will. Otherwise, we'll have everything here when we come in Thursday and pick up the discussion from there. So no one else has any questions? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Angela, second?
Second.
Taken by Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.